I want to call the December 20th, 2011 meeting of Bowling Green Board of Commissioners to order. The first item on the agenda is invocation will be led tonight by Brian Lewis, the Director of Hope House Ministries, and also Chaplain Bowling Green High Purple Football Team. Would you all stand with us?
Let us pray. God, we come to you tonight knowing that you are God and that we are not. There is none like you. Your majestic and holy and your awesome deeds are glorious among the nations. Nothing can compare to you. I pray for the city officials before us tonight. May they have dignity and character. May they see their role as a role of service to the city and not to themselves. May they fight for justice and mercy. May they seek to serve the city in a way that makes much of you. May they treat all people with dignity and respect, no matter how rich or poor. May they see that the authority that has been given to them has come from you. Father, I pray that they will love and care for this city because of how you have loved and cared for this city. Forgive us as we have sought to worship ourselves and not you. Father, because of our disobedience against you, we are not worthy to stand here tonight. Lord, as many have agendas here tonight, Lord, I pray we will have one agenda, and that is to seek the welfare of the city. We thank you, God, that we are able to seek the welfare of the city as you have sought the welfare of the city by providing us a sufficient sacrifice for our sins through your Son, Jesus Christ. Lord, we thank you that this sacrifice came from you, a holy and just God, and for that we give you praise. I thank you that his death was sufficient to pay for our sins. And Father, we thank you that he rose from the grave and he conquered sin's curse upon our life. What I pray that this evening will honor you, and we pray all these things in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you for your join, as we begin to pledge allegiance. Ms. Hill will lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Denny.
Here.
Commissioner Hill.
Here.
Commissioner Nash is absent. Commissioner Waltrip.
Here.
Mayor Wilkerson.
Here. Our first item on our agenda is going to be a pretty big crowd. We have an opportunity to honor the accomplishments of our local Bowling Green High football team, recognizing their state football championship. And gentlemen, if you could, I'd like to bring you up here inside this well if you would line up. Come on down. Judge Buchanan is going to join us as we do a joint proclamation with Warren Fiscal Court. Coach, I know you got, what, 120 players or so. It looked like it on the sidelines when you saw them lined up. That was a great intimidating factor. Coach, if I could get you to go to the microphone. Coach Kevin Wallace is going to help us identify each of the players here tonight.
Well, we have just a few of our seniors that are with us tonight. We are on Christmas break and a lot of folks are out of town. I'll start right here with offensive lineman Josh Minton, one of our linebackers Chase Proctor, our kicker Sam Williams, one of our running backs Hunter Navarres, a cornerback Montell Carpenter, an offensive lineman Joe Manley, defensive lineman Daquan Irvin, and one of our defensive lineman Jared Ingram, one of our running backs Brandon Green, and our outside linebackers coach Justin Chaffin.
That's great. Good job, fellas. Gentlemen, if you would stay where you are, Judge Buchanan and I are going to read a joint proclamation from the City of Bowling Green and the County of Warren. And I'll begin this season of Bowling Green Purples football, whereas the Bowling Green High School football team maintained a perfect 15-0 winning season for 2011, and whereas the Bowling Green High School football team won the Kentucky 5A football championship game in the Commonwealth Gridiron Bowl, and whereas the Bowling Green High School football team amassed the largest ever margin of victory in the history of the championship game by a score of 55 to 3, and whereas...
The Bowling Green High School football team and the coaching staff, led by the head coach Kevin Wallace, has dominated high school football in 2011, and whereas Bowling Green High School Purple fans are the greatest fans in Kentucky. Now therefore, we, Bruce Wilkerson, the mayor of the City of Bowling Green, and Michael O' Buchanan, Judge Executive of the County of Warren, Kentucky, to hereby proclaim 2011 as the season of Bowling Green Purples football. We're so proud of you all.
Give this to you, Mayor. Mayor, I would ask that...
Let's get a picture with Kevin. I'll try to be thin.
Mr. Waltrip.
I was going to ask if they'd stay up here during the meeting. I feel so much safer.
Commissioner Nash wanted me to express his regrets for not being able to be with you tonight. He's a big fan also and had a work obligation that he could not get out, but he's also with us, and congratulations. Mr. Denny.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say a couple of words. The mayor and I usually go to all of the football games at Bowling Green High and sit together, along with Commissioner Nash, when he's not calling himself working. But again, we are proud of you. I'm not a...I wasn't born to purple, but I served on the school board for many years, the Bowling Green School Board, that is. And I've had two daughters to graduate from Bowling Green High, and now I've had two grandsons to graduate from Bowling Green High. And I've got one that's at high school now, well, two at high school, and one more on the way. It's going to be a while before he gets there. But I tell and tease people, and I say it in a respectful way, that, you know, when we all go up to the big place and in the sky up there and the Lord comes out of the pearly gates and opens the gate, and he says a few words, but his first words that he says, or he asks, is how many of you are Bowling Green High Purples? And once you say that you are, you come to the front of the line. So congratulations.
Thanks so much. I would like to thank everybody for this recognition, and obviously, there are so many people that are much more responsible for this than I. I think that any time that you look at constructing a great program, just as you would a great city or a business, there are so many different entities that have to be welded together. And in our case, you have to have great players, and you see a few of those standing here before you. You have to have outstanding coaches that are willing to develop relationships with those players. I can't thank my staff enough. I think I've got the best coaching staff in the state of Kentucky. You've got to have parents that are willing to give up of their time, because we're going to ask a lot of time these young men. And not at the least, you have to have an administration that will go the extra mile for their students to do best for the students. And we have every resource in our school system to be great teachers and great coaches. Joe Tenius is with here with us tonight, our superintendent. I'd like to just personally thank him and our board members for everything that he's given us. And lastly, as you see here tonight, you've got to have a community that supports you, that also aids in the resources of providing you with everything that you need to have a great program. It's going to be a great Christmas for the Purples. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Coach. I'm proud of you, buddy.
I appreciate you.
You too.
Thanks again, gentlemen, for sharing your evening with us and letting us share your accomplishments. Congratulations. Mr. Lackey, I believe you have something for us this evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. I have three awards this evening, and I would like to also add that we are working on getting the Purples recognizing champions triangle over between the skate park and the ballpark. We'll be doing that as soon as we get the sign and get it put up. This evening, we have three awards. The first award is a residential award. It's at 307 Cherry Way. The owners of the property are Gennaro Sierra and Carmen Sierra, and this evening, they have their three sons with them, Carlos, Havera, and Elias. If they would please come forward to receive the recognition.
Good job. Carlos, would you like to say anything to the group?
I would like to thank everyone for this award that you've given us. It's been a lot of hard work for the house to get into good shape, and we're really glad that we're here tonight to accept this award.
Thank you.
And I apologize that I don't have a PowerPoint presentation this evening. I had one prepared, but with everything going on this evening, as you all know, we didn't have time to set it up and get it ready. The second award is a commercial award, and it's Vino's Restaurant. It's at 1475 Clay Street. If you don't know where 1475 Clay Street, you get to Kentucky Street and 6880, where the traffic's going both ways. It's right on the corner, and it's very visible. They made a remarkable improvement, and I hope that you'll not only look at this property on our website, but also the Cherry Street. So if I could get Blake Light and Teresa Hilyard to come forward to receive the presentation.
Well, I was told to keep this short and sweet, and I will. I would just like to thank our mayor and esteemed commission, and this is truly, I've been doing this for about 40 years now, and so when someone recognizes you're something you've put so much passion into and so much work and effort, it feels really good. I'd also like to thank the people of Bowling Green. We opened up July 1st, and we've been welcomed, welcomed, welcomed. And so I'm new to town. She's lived here 50, oh, no, 35 years. So as an outsider, I've come in, and it's obvious that pride is something that runs, is a fiber that runs through this community. I see it everywhere. I see the little stickers, "I love Bowling Green" everywhere, and so it's been a great experience for me. And again, I'd just like to thank everybody, from my employees to the commission here tonight, and definitely the people of Bowling Green that have been supporting us so, so much. So thank you all very, very much, and we're going to keep up the good work and continue to improve and make the city a better place. Thank you.
Ray, I'll say one other thing. Not only does your business look good, but you have excellent food and the service is fantastic. That's another reason you're doing so well. Very good.
Thank you, sir. Thank you all very, very much. Thank you, sir.
Mayor, Commissioners, the last award that I have this evening is an award for one of our board members. As everyone here knows, when Elaine left as the mayor and Joe stepped up, he not only stepped up as mayor, he also stepped up to become a member of the Operation Pride Board, and during that time, he helped us do some great things. So Joe, if you would, Commissioner, come down here. I'd like to present you with a plaque for your service from April 2011 to November 2011, Board of Directors, Operation Pride. I appreciate it. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Mr. Febow, that's all I'm aware of, other than...
No other announcements.
We did have our employee service awards...
Oh, that's right.
...last week. I don't know that I could mention all the numerous people that we had, but service of up to 40 years, I think, amongst those, and we appreciate all the hard work that those employees have given us. Do you have any comments, Mr. Febow?
Yes, there'll be a need for an executive session. Kate will read the reasons.
Pursuant to KRS 61810B for deliberations on the future acquisition or sale of real property by the city, but only when publicity would likely affect the value of a specific piece of property to be acquired for public use or sold by the city. KRS 61810C for discussions of proposed or pending litigation against or on behalf of the city, and KRS 61810G, discussions between the city and a representative of business entity, and discussions concerning a specific proposal if open discussions would jeopardize the siting, retention, expansion, or upgrading of the business.
Motion by Waltrip, second by Hill. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Denny.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
The second item, Mayor, with your courtesy, I'd like to have a late file tonight.
We're going to need to entertain a motion and place that on the agenda at the end.
Yeah.
Need a motion placed. Motion by Waltrip.
Second.
Second by Hill. To add municipal order 2011-241 to the agenda. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Denny.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
Anything else, Mr. Febow?
That's it.
All right. First item is approval amendments of the December 6, 2011 meeting.
So moved.
Motion by Hill, second by Waltrip. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Denny.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
At this point in our agenda, we have an opportunity for public comments. If there are any people in the audience that wish to make a comment regarding an item that is not covered on our regular agenda, this is your opportunity to do that. Seeing no one's hand or stepping forward, we'll go to the second reading of ordinance 2011-49.
Ordinance closing a public right-of-way. Ordinance approving the closing of a portion of two alleys bounded by 11th Avenue, Broadway Avenue, High Street, and Kenton Street.
So moved. Second. Motion by Waltrip, second by Denny. Any discussion? Mr. Denny, you had a question last time. You got all those answered correctly.
I think I'm in good shape, as far as what I think Kevin is looking at down the road.
Okay. Anything else? Please call the roll.
Denny.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
Ordinance 2011-50, second reading.
Ordinance amending Code of Ordinances. Ordinance amending Chapter 25 Code of Ethics of the City of Bowling Green Code of Ordinances to amend subchapter dealing with standards of conduct and to make related amendments.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Waltrip, second by Hill. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Denny.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
Second reading of ordinance 2011-51.
Ordinance amending Code of Ordinances. Ordinance amending Chapter 15 Business and General Regulations of the City of Bowling Green Code of Ordinances related to the sale and use of fireworks.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Denny. Any discussion?
This is the last reading for fireworks.
That's correct.
Good.
Mr. Febow, does you have a question?
Just some added information. Since this was the second reading, staff, meaning the fire department, the police department, and my office, has gotten together and put together for you all a guide sheet and a map and a permit. The ordinance, as you know, anticipates two special times during the year. One time is a generalized time for discharge from June 27th to July 5th. Doesn't require a permit. Any other time requires a permit. So before you is a sample permit we put together for you, as well as the fireman's investigation. The special permit only allows fireworks to be discharged, other than those seven days, for only four hours at a time, and only upon the approval of the fire department. There is no fee for that. So it does allow the discharge of fireworks for a limited time. The critical thing being that the applicant has to demonstrate to the fire department that they fall outside the 200-foot zone for those other days. Brian O'Callahan is here, and he's handled most of the issues involved with fireworks, if any of the commission has a question. So we also, for the commission, plan to put together a tutorial for the residents of the city to how to use fireworks safely come June, July period. I think that's something that we need, and we're working on it now. But this is for the period other than July 27th to July 5th, which requires a special permit for discharge.
Put that tutorial on Channel 4.
Well, we want to sunshine it to you first, to see if you agree with it, because there's a delicate balance there, because we're dealing with a 200-foot thing, and we're asking people to follow law with courtesy. I guess that's the best way to put it. What does courtesy mean? And we're going to try to demonstrate that through a video, what discharge of fireworks with courtesy means. So we got together, we started brain thinking it, and I think we'll be ready in about a month and a half to present something to you.
Thank you. Anything else? Please call the roll.
Denny.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
Municipal order 2011-228.
Municipal order approving the reappointments of Sue Perigin and Monica Burke to the Administrative Appeals Board.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Waltrip. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Denny.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
Municipal order 2011-229.
Municipal order approving the appointment of Jennifer Tugus to the Greenways Commission of Bowling Green in Warren County.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Denny. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Denny.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
Municipal order 2011-230.
Municipal order approving the promotion of Theodore L. Webb to the position of Code Enforcement Coordinator in the Neighborhood and Community Services Department.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Denny, second by Hill. Mr. Febow.
Yes, I would ask Brent Childers to come forward and to make his promotion.
Mayor, Commissioners, thanks for the opportunity. We went through a competitive process to get to this point. We received a total of 15 applications, completed two rounds of interviews, a written exercise, and I'm here tonight to recommend Teddy Webb for the promotion to Code Enforcement Coordinator. Teddy has a balance of skills that brought him to this position. Has a balance of technical ability from his days as an electrician, as an electrical inspector. Also the balance of being able to effectively communicate with a variety of individuals. That was shown through his implementation of the temporary sign ordinance. Teddy and I both look forward to the challenges and opportunities that code enforcement has for the citizens of Bowling Green. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Questions?
Is he here?
Teddy's here.
He is here with his family.
His family's there. Congratulations, Teddy. Yeah, that's your family with you? And I didn't catch the introduction.
This is Kalib Lisa, and this is Kayla.
Kayla, thank you all for coming. I know we appreciate your support. I don't think there's any further discussion. I guess we need to vote on it. Please call the roll.
Denny.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
Congratulations. Next, we have municipal order 2011-231.
Municipal order approving the probationary appointments of Michael S. Amos, Philman U. Carpenter, Jacob T. Forrester, Nicole L. Hatchett, Clifton A. Phelps, and Melissa M. Wartek to the position of Police Officer in the Police Department.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Waltrip, second by Denny. Mr. Febow.
As the commission knows, we're constantly on the lookout for the best individuals to become police officers in our department. We have a need for officers on a continual basis. There's a testing and procurement process. We're here tonight to recommend these individuals, and I believe they're here. Mike Grubbs, as well as Quina Norris are here, if you have any questions about how the procurement was handled.
Young guys, stand up. We want to all take a look at you. Congratulations. Glad you're here tonight. Thank you. And you've got family members with you, too, scattered out there. Thank you all for coming. Any questions, comments?
I told them they didn't need my vote, because they get to three before it got to me, but without Slim here, I think they need my vote. One of the young men was a student of mine, and I didn't hurt you too bad, so proud of all of you. I know you'll do a good job.
And the young lady I've known for many years, and I'm awfully proud of her. She is outstanding. And guys, you two guys especially, don't start telling them about when y'all used to have horses and buggies. We have cars now, so don't say anything about that.
Only at your direction. We'll pass up on that. Any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Denny.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Municipal order 2011-232.
Municipal order approving the probationary appointment of Dan M. Rayly to the position of Laborer 2 in the Public Works Department.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Denny, second by Hill.
We had a vacancy in this department due to resignation. We had 78 applicants for this position. To give you an idea, a number of people looking for jobs, it was a very, very, very difficult choice. We put together, as always, a group approach to securing what we think is the best person from that process. There was unanimous choice that Dayan Rayly, am I pronouncing his name correctly, was the best applicant in the group. Dayan works for us currently part-time in the Landscape Division and has an excellent record there and is recommended very highly. If there's any question, again, Mike Grubbs is here or Bobby Phelps, if you have any questions.
Dan, everyone wants to take a look at you. Stand up and see, so they see who you are. Congratulations. Thank you. Do you have family here, too?
This is Mike Garber.
Thank you. Glad you could be here with us. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Denny.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
Thank you all. If y'all want to slip out, you're welcome to, but you're welcome to remain for the whole meeting if you like.
That didn't take much.
Look at Quina. She ought to be made to stay, Your Honor.
Quina, he's talking about you.
She's ignoring you, too.
All right. Municipal order 2011-233.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2012-06 for door hardware replacement project for the Sloan Convention Center from Carter Douglas Company LLC of Russellville, Kentucky, in the amount of $69,500.
Motion by Denny, second by Hill.
As the commission knows, or any of the public who go to the Sloan Convention Center, there's quite a few people that go in and out of the doors every day, and they take quite a beating over time. We feel a need to maintain the facility in great condition. So at your 6 o'clock meeting, it's my understanding, you approved the award to lowest bidder for placement hardware, as well as at least one new door. Michael Grubbs is here, if you have any generalized questions about need to be answered for the public.
Mr. Denny.
Mike, is this a general contracting company, or is this a manufacturing company?
Contracting company.
Okay.
And they're probably purchasing from a supplier here in Bowling Green.
Yeah. Thank you.
And Mr. Febo, reference to six o'clock meeting, we had the Convention Center Corporation Committee met prior to this meeting to recommend these next, or this item and the next two, I believe it is. The next one. Any other discussion? Please call or roll.
Denning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal Order 2011-234.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2012-08 for Kamloch portable dance floors for the Sloan Convention Center from SICO America of Edna, Minnesota, in the amount of $42,446.40.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Hill, second by Waltrip. Is any discussion?
Just want to remind the public, if you're looking for a place to have a wedding, we have a brand-new dance floor that we're buying tonight, and it can also be used for your party. The Sloan Convention Center is a popular marriage-party site, as well as a variety of different activities, and we need a dance floor, and this allows us to put those together in a quick basis, and to allow people to use the facility for that purpose. Again, as the mayor mentioned, it was approved at six o'clock.
Any other discussion? Please call or roll.
Denning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Next is Resolution 2011-3.
Resolution supporting the Warren County Ordinance prohibiting the possession and or sale of AM cannabinoids, CP cannabinoids, JWH cannabinoids, and Hu cannabinoids, synthetic cannabinoids agonists.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Waltrip, second by Denning. Mr. Waltrip, can you lead us in this discussion?
This is a resolution that has been a few weeks in the making. Warren County Fiscal Court on Friday passed on a first reading regarding this issue, and the City Board wants to show our support of what the county did in passing that first reading. The second reading, I think, will be January 13th. But what this allows us to do is get a substance off the streets of Bowling Green that should be outlawed. And again, this is just showing our support. I'd like to thank Jean Harmon and Amy Millican, the county attorney, and Jean Harmon, our city attorney, for working through numerous issues involved with this substance. And this actually started in late spring, when someone brought it to our attention that this substance was being sold in Bowling Green. So it's taken from that time, but again, I think we have a good ordinance. It's my belief that Jody Richards will be introducing a bill in January to hopefully make these issues moot on the local level, and the state will hopefully pass some legislation that will take care of this. So hopefully, this is a temporary measure. I will also say, I talked with Tommy Loving, the Director of the Drug Task Force, this afternoon, and during the last meeting, we had a working session on this two weeks ago. And one of the businesses that supposedly was selling the substance was Easy Liquors over on Clay Street, and Tommy was advised that they had not been selling this substance, so I think it's the right thing to bring that out as well. But again, I think this is a good move for us to support county government in their ordinance, and I think it's an example of how city and county in this community work together for the betterment of our community.
Further discussion? Please call or roll.
Denning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal Order 2011-235.
Municipal order approving a Kentucky Infrastructure Authority federally assisted wastewater revolving loan fund increase in the amount of $2,500,000 to an existing KIA loan for renovations and expansion of the wastewater treatment plant.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Waltrip, second by Denning. Mr. Febo.
Yes, this is, we're here tonight for requests from BGMU to add $2.5 million to its existing loan to continue improvements at the wastewater treatment plant to come into greater compliance with the Clean Water Act. This loan is added to the roughly $52 million loan they have right now. It's at 1% interest, which is outstanding, and it's for 20 years, and it's important for the citizens to know this does not come from the general fund, but from the rate payers who actually use, all of us use that product here in Bowling Green. Mike Gardner's here, if you have any technical questions.
Any questions, Mr. Gardner? Thank you for coming. I think we understand from the packet what we have to vote on this evening.
And the only other thing is to compliment Mike, you and the folks at BGMU. Every thriving community in the country that has a good water supply is going to be that community that's going to move forward, and you all provide us with that. It's very much appreciated.
Please call or roll.
Denning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Ordinance 2011-53, first reading.
Ordinance relating to cable television franchise and ordinance of the City of Bowling Green, section of the Bowling Green-Warnen County Cable Franchise Authority, approving franchise extension agreements with Insight Kentucky Partners 2 LP and Time Warner Cable Incorporated, and authorizing the mayor to execute the agreements on behalf of the city.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Denning, second by Waltrip. Mr. Febo.
Mayor, ordinance number 13 and resolution number 14 are in the same family. They were related to cable television, the franchise. I think it'd be important for our city attorney to speak to both of these documents.
Okay, in some ways, everybody knows we've had a cable franchise here in Bowling Green, Warren County for 180 or so. We've gone through three or four different companies since then. For the last seven, eight years, or nine years, I forgot how long, that franchisee has been Insight Communications. They have a Kentucky-created, I think, limited partnership, operates it here in Kentucky. Probably the biggest cable company in Kentucky. They're in Louisville, Lexington, northern Kentucky, I think Henderson, Bowling Green. They have most of the Kentucky's urban cities under their franchises. Our original franchise agreement with them was for 10 years. Five years ago, we renewed it for another five years. It's set to expire on December 31st, here in another week or so. The extension is regulated by federal law and federal regulations by the FCC. We started this several months ago. It always takes, I guess, longer than everybody thinks it would take. Some of the things we have done in the past, we didn't do this time. And traditionally in the past, we've done like a franchise audit. We don't need to do that anymore because we don't get franchise fees. The Commonwealth Kentucky stepped in a few years ago and took those under their umbrella with the idea that we would be held harmless for our fees. Not an issue today, but we're not being held harmless. Jeff shared with me a letter before we started this one that our franchise money from the state is now going to decrease another 2% because of a court action that was successful in Kentucky. So we're going to be getting, I guess, even less, which is not an issue really tonight. But we're, like I said, we're regulated by the statutes and by the guidelines. Some of the things we've done in the past, too, we've done technical audits. We didn't do one this time. Every time we've done one, technically, they've come out very well on the results we've done. We thought it wasn't worth the money this time to do one. We did look through their complaint logs. You know, there are some complaints, but nothing that we consider to be substantial enough not to justify extending their franchise. Again, federal law has three or four things you have to look at in deciding whether you're going to extend a franchise or not. Again, whether they have substantially complied with the material terms of the existing franchise and with law, whether the quality of their service, including signal quality, has been reasonable in light of community needs, whether they have the financial, legal, and technical ability to satisfy a proposal, which we'll talk about here in a minute, and whether their proposal is reasonable to meet the future cable-related needs in the interest of the city and county. This year, we got hit with an unusual issue at the same time that the renewal was coming due. If you recall, we had a public hearing back in August, a combined one of the authority with the city commission and fiscal court. Within probably days of that public hearing, it became public that Insight Communications was being merged with Time Warner. Time Warner is probably the second or third largest cable company in the country. Because of that, and because of the, I guess, those issues running together, you know, particularly these last two things, you know, financial, legal, and technical ability to satisfy the proposal, really that issue maybe more falls now upon Time Warner than does Insight. I think nobody disputes that probably Insight or Time Warner, either one, don't have the financial ability to operate cable systems. They've both been doing it for years. And again, the issue about their proposal is reasonable to meet the future cable-related needs. This time, we really didn't have an opportunity to negotiate much of anything. I think Insight was probably a little bit reluctant to negotiate, knowing that Time Warner was going to be the operator of the system. I think they were not real interested in negotiating a long-term franchise renewal because of that issue, because they didn't want to tie the hands of Time Warner. So initially, they came to us and said, and recommended a six-month extension. We went back and said, we'd like to extend at least for a year, because we don't want to have to spend immediately after we do this the next six months doing this all over again, although a year will pass quicker than you think. So we've got two issues on you for you tonight. It's the extension of the franchise agreement. We have two separate agreements. One with Insight that will be effective up until the closing date of the merger with Time Warner. The second agreement is the extension with Time Warner through January 31st, 2013. Along with that, almost 120 days ago, we received notice from Time Warner about the purchase, or at least their acquisition or merger with Insight. By law, we have to, we have 120 days to approve that request, or it becomes effective by operation of law, and that date is quickly approaching. I think it's somewhere around December 28th. So if we don't approve it, it's going to be approved by law. But we still thought it'd be better to go ahead and put it on the agenda, approve it. That way, at least we've got in our records that we received the application, and we approved it. Pretty much the same criteria you follow. You look at whether the existing franchisees in compliance. Then you look at the ability of the person, that the company wanting to purchase it, whether they have the ability to carry out the franchise terms. Again, there's nothing that we could find that Insight is not substantially in compliance with the ordinance. You know, everybody has some issues. Well, not everybody, but there are some issues, but some customer service. You know, most of the complaints that I've received through the years has been fee-related. I got an email this week, somebody wants a Louisville station. I emailed them back and said, we've talked to them. But like a lot of, what a lot of people don't realize is that cities don't have a whole lot of ability in the regulation of cable companies. We can't regulate what stations that they carry. We can't regulate. The only thing that we can regulate is the basic fee, basic cable service fee, which is, I think here now, it's $13 or $14 a month for the basic cable service. Beyond those fees, the cities and a county has no ability to regulate. So most of the issues, again, about fees and carrying of shows, and carrying of other networks and stuff, we just simply don't have the ability to regulate. This is a franchise for cable television only. It's not related to their telephone service or to their internet service, again, by FCC, law, and regulations. We can't regulate those either. And I know I saw the comment from Mayor Wilkinson. I want to repeat it. I want to repeat it every time I speak about this. This is a non-exclusive franchise. Any other company that wants to provide cable service is perfectly free to come to the city and propose a franchise agreement with the city and county. So far, you know, we're, because, I guess, due to two or three things, at least in my view, due to our size, due to the penetration of Insight, due to the cost of installing a cable service, you know, we've not had a competing company coming in. But this franchise agreement with Insight, soon to be with Time Warner, again, I repeat it, is non-exclusive. We're open to anybody and everybody who wants to come in and compete. And if you've got any other questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them.
Mr. Denning?
Mayor. Sometime back, as you said, I had the city manager, and of course, you, we sat down and talked with the top person out of New York with Insight. And I passed that on to the mayor sometime back. And things, I guess, sound a lot easier when you're on one side than it is when you're on the other side. As he explained to us, and one of our major gripes, and the question to him was that what we hear, all of us, what we hear is that we want a Louisville station. We know more about what goes on in the state of Tennessee than we do here in Kentucky. So he explained after that question what they have to go through with a Louisville station, negotiate a price with them, pay them a big hunk of money in order for a station to go somewhere else, and in this case, to Bowling Green. So all the things that we have been asked as a city commission, we asked of the top dog at Time Warner, I mean, at Insight, before the Time Warner Insight business even started. It may have been going on back then, but we didn't know it. Now we know that Time Warner is going to buy Insight. And as you said, they've been bought out several times. is going to buy Insight. And as you said, they've been bought out several times. I remember when they started off, the Louisville House on Colley, on the bypass behind Kentucky Fried Chicken. And it was another name at that time. But I guess the point I'm making or trying to make is, there's not a lot of things that we can do, other than the things that you mentioned.
But we will, you know, we will continue those discussions with Time Warner over the next few months. Couple of issues I really didn't mention, and, you know, I'm not an advocate for the cable company of not here speaking for them, but, you know, some of the issues they have to address when they carry TV stations, you know, they may have some costs. Some of these TV stations want payments to pick them up and carry them. And particularly, if they're going to be out of area. Unfortunately for us, they consider Louisville and Lexington to be outside our area. And how to say this politely, what hurts us is the fact that we locally have stations. You know, if we were someplace else and had no local stations, I think they'd have probably the better ability to go pick up other networks and other stations. But we have all the affiliates here. And those affiliates also have some ability to protest the cable company bringing in an outside competitor. You know, if we've got an ABC or CBS, you know, if I was to own that station, I might be real keen about bringing in a Louisville, CBS and ABC to compete with me, since I'm here locally. So that's other issues they want to deal with as well. But Insight didn't seem receptive to look into it, to see what they could do. Hopefully, we'll get that same type of reception from Time Warner. That is one of the issues on our list to look at for the next few months. Again, this is only going to be effective until the end of January 2013. So we'll be back next year with hopefully a new franchise. I know the county has some issues about line extension numbers. About you, all my major, one of my major concerns is I want to make sure our peg channels stay low on the TV numbers, so people don't have to go to Channel nine hundred and fifty to watch you guys. They don't have to have a box to watch this thing, because a lot of people don't have the money to pay for boxes every month. So, you know, there's several issues that we're going to be looking at over the next several months. But one of them will be, you know, see what they can do to work out to bring either Louisville or Lexington channel here.
Thank you, Mayor.
Anyone else?
Mr. Harmon, did we ever receive any response back from them over the issues that we brought up at that public hearing? And the ones that I remember most readily was the Louisville station, the sound levels, especially for this particular channel, Channel four, and then the costs to the school systems and the government entities.
Well, like I said, on the Louisville Lexington, we've talked to them once or twice since sending Insight. No phone answer. They're still looking at it. The sound, I'm not sure I've heard anything about that one at all. And like I said, you know, we're doing here with cable television, which is not, you know, part of the school agreement. But I have not heard anything about that. I think that's still going to have to be negotiated. Right now, the school systems have agreements with Insight. I'm not sure how long their agreements are good for, but I'm not sure of our ability to, I mean, we can certainly talk about that next year, too, with Time Warner. Whether we can connect the two may be a different issue.
The city receives some consideration as part of the franchise agreement, does it not?
The franchise agreement right now does not talk about any type of telecommunications issues, including any type of internet connectivity, any type of agreements between them and the school systems. I don't think under FCC regulations, we can require them to enter any type of contract and specify the terms. Again, I think next year, when we start negotiating Time Warner, that may be something that we can at least broach with them and talk with them about, maybe bring the school systems into some of our meetings with Time Warner, too. But I don't think there's anything that we can compel through the cable franchise renewal process.
What are the, in summary, what are the issues that we can actually negotiate with? You talked, the basic cable fee.
Probably what most communities are looking at, I mean, if you are talking about some of them, like the county, the extension policies. Right now, we're twenty houses per linear mile. Some places have more. I think somebody said Lexington maybe has the best in the state right now, maybe fourteen or sixteen, somewhere in that range. I know the county's very interested in that. We think most of the people in the city that, within the range are connected, I can't guarantee you that. Probably peg issues, not only what I supposed to talk about, but if there's any willingness to help the city and the county financially to help operate our peg channels here, our government channels. Some places do have the ability to negotiate some type of financial terms on those for assistance. I think, of course, we also, you know, clearly we want to protect our rights away and regulate, you know, how the excess, and make sure they can bring them back into working conditions. Kind of, I mean, other than that, we're open to any other issues and topics that, you know, again, we'll talk to them about the Louisville Lexington channel, but that's something, again, we can't compel them to do. But, you know, any other issues, we had a public hearing, hoping we would pick up maybe a few concerns. I think one thing, of course, we'll work with will be customer standards. We, you know, we don't know what Time Warner's going to do. You know, hopefully, Time Warner will keep a local office here. You know, that may be something they want to talk to them about, to guarantee that they've got a local office that people can go to, pick up boxes, and make payments. In a lot of places, you know, cable companies, I guess, are like everybody else. If they're trying to cut costs, one of the usual ways to cut costs is to close local offices. And I'm not going to spread that rumor that they're saying, but, you know, we may want to make sure about customer service, again, that they respond to complaints timely, you know, about either payment issues or technical quality issues. So, you know, we'll be looking at the customer service side of this as well.
The people that've talked to me, it's been the competitive issue and some other issues regarding TV, not regarding the internet, which is a whole other issue, other telephone. And the only other issue that someone presented to me was the idea that if you owe, and I'm putting it the way they did it, if you owe Insight money, they collect it immediately. If they owe you money, it takes them six to eight weeks to get it to you. So, I don't know, maybe something just to bring to their attention.
Like I said, I think customer service standards will be something we'll look at again as well.
Anyone else?
And that is one of the issues that I think we brought up at the meeting we had with the gentleman from Insight, was the fact that if I make a local call to the Insight office, I want to talk to the person down on Double Springs Road, the local office.
At one that, and I think they corrected that one time, a lot of the calls were going to Evansville.
Yeah.
My understanding is it's now being answered locally here in Bowling Green.
Thank you.
Mr. Peterson. Please give us your name and address for the record, please.
My name is George Peterson. I'm a Bowling Green resident at twenty-one thirty-eight Small House Road. And my interest in this goes back several months. I would not begin to talk about and argue about the complex issues that relate to cable and franchises and the FCC laws that cover all that up. But I would have this to say. We have two fledgling data communications networks that belong to the municipal government in Bowling Green. One is BGMU's digital fiber optic build-out, and the other is the City of Bowling Green's Wi-Fi build-out. To the extent that, and I, my background is data, so I consider data to be the fourth utility, water, gas, electric and data. Didn't happen twenty-five years ago, but it is today. In that context, I would appreciate if the city and BGMU did a serious study about expanding those, either or both of those two services to the citizenry. It could be fee-based. Everything that we use now that has to do with data or phone or television is fee-based. Doesn't have to be free. So it can be revenue, it can be a revenue-generating source. I would like for us to deal with that, to look at that, to do a comprehensive study of how to go about offering that as an alternative. Because what we have today in practical terms is a monopoly. I give you that it's a private enterprise, but it's a monopoly in Bowling Green, Kentucky. There are no viable competitive alternatives to them that I know about. The other is that I really would like for us to at least examine seriously the alternative of cable television being offered by the municipality. It's done in lots of other places where municipalities often play in this marketplace. You all know that Glasgow does, Frankfurt does, South Central Railroad Telephone does offer local competitive cable services. And it's my understanding that where they offer them, the rates are sometimes significantly lower than we experience in Bowling Green. I understand there's a serious capital build-out issue, I understand that. But a feasibility study and some comprehensive surveys might tell us whether that's a value to be pursued, whether there is, in fact, a revenue stream to be enjoyed and a profit to be made. Those are the sorts of things that concern me about it, because what I don't want is, I don't want, in any part of our world, to have a monopoly interest from anybody, because that, we change the way we do business when we have a monopoly. When we know that there are no other games in town, we tend to behave differently. So I have an interest in that, and I wanted to convey that to the mayor and to the commissioners. See if there's one more thing. In the course of doing some anecdotal studies about this thing, it did seem to me that there were conversations being made among franchisors about the ability to negotiate with the cable franchisee the opportunity to provide certain government and educational services at either significant discounts or, in many cases, even free. And that that was a lever that the franchisor had to pull, to get those services provided to those entities at differential costs or at known costs, if you will. I've heard rumors that when Time Warner became the franchise provider at some other place, the governmental and educational costs went through the roof. Now, that's scuttlebutt to me. I don't know whether that's fact or not. But I would have you at least look at that and not just become, I don't want us to become blank checks to these folks. We, they deserve to have a competitor. We deserve to have competitors available to us. And that's my interest. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Anyone else? Just as a matter of public interest, Insight notified us that there'd be a three-dollar increase on the classic cable service, which I think is ninety-seven percent of all of the subscribers to their service, that will begin on January first. It's your January bill. Any other comments? All right, I think we're ready to vote on the first reading of this ordinance extending for thirteen months the franchise to cable television for Insight. Please call the roll.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Next is a resolution, a joint resolution with Warren County Cable Franchise Authority, number fifty-five.
Resolution of the City of Bowling Green, section of the Bowling Green Warren County Cable Franchise Authority, approving the transfer of control of the franchise agreement from Insight Kentucky Partners II LP to a wholly-owned subsidiary of Time Warner Cable Incorporated.
Second.
Motion by Dunning, second by Hill. Is there any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order two thousand eleven, two thirty-six.
Mayor.
I'm sorry.
Mayor, yes, of course.
Sure.
I know in the past, we've heard about, and we just heard it just a few minutes ago, that I think Glasgow in the past had two cable systems. And we've heard of others, communities that have had two cable systems. But haven't we also found from that information that the new systems come in and they start low with their prices and eventually have to go to a certain point, I'm talking about high, higher than what they initially started with, based on equipment and other things that they have to have in order to compete? Is that a true statement that anyone has heard, or am I the only one, maybe, that has dreamed that?
I'm not sure I can address that question. I lived in, and Bowling Green is a great place to live, because we lived in Frankfurt for about eleven years. And there's no comparison, no disregard, disregard for people who live in Frankfurt, but there's no comparison. When we were there, they had two cable systems. They had a private and they had a government. If I'm not mistaken, I think after we moved away, one of them bought the other one or they merged, I think. What I heard was that Frankfurt's about half our size. I'm not too sure either one of them were doing that well, competing with each other, and they ended up being bought out. And I'm not sure which one survived, the government or the private one. But I think there are one system there now, I think. I may be wrong. But I will tell you, their rates were good. We moved to Bowling Green and our cable rates almost tripled by moving one hundred and fifty miles away, because they had great rates, because you had two companies.
This issue, apparently, it's not going to go away. And we're, right after we do this, again, next year, we're going to talk about it. This may be an issue that if we could agree to talk about it at our January meeting, and some of the things that George said, come up with a decision on what we would do, that if it would be appropriate, I'd like to place it for our January retreat meeting, the day-long meeting we have. Would that be appropriate?
Yep.
Yeah.
Joe, I do know studies have shown cities that have offered data plans, internet services, when they've taken that upon themselves, they do it for a while, then get out of it because they find the cities cannot handle it. So I know I have heard that go along with what you're saying.
We have studied some of these issues already, based on some requests over the past couple of years. So we have some information, some that's factual, some that's anecdotal, and we'll present that at the retreat.
I'd like to hear that in one sitting and hear it all and...
Sure.
Thank you.
All right, we're at Municipal Order two thousand eleven, two thirty-six.
Municipal Order authorizing the acceptance of two thousand twelve grant funds from the Appalachia High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area through the Office of National Drug Control Policy in the amount of thirty thousand dollars.
Second.
Motion by Waltrip, second by Dunning.
We're here to ask your permission to accept thirty thousand dollars from the Appalachian High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area. That'll provide us eight hundred hours of overtime for a police officer who participate in the drug task force. It's kind of a no-brainer. So we recommend your approval.
Discussion? Please call the roll.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Thank you for sticking around. Municipal Order two thousand eleven, two thirty-seven.
Municipal Order approving construction and accepting maintenance of various streets in Greystone Subdivision, Section Two.
Second.
Motion by Dunning, second by Waltrip.
This is a ministerial action by the commission to accept into our domain another part of the Greystone Subdivision, Section Two. We have a whole series of criteria that have to be met. Our Public Works Department has inspected Section Two and recommend your approval. Jeff Lashley is here, if you have any questions.
Any questions? Please call the roll.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Next is Municipal Order two thousand eleven, two thirty-eight.
Municipal Order accepting the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for the period ending June thirtieth, two thousand eleven, as prepared by the Department of Finance and audited by Mount Joy Chilton Medley LLP.
Second.
Motion by Waltrip, second by Hill. Mr. Febo.
About four years ago, the city undertook a significant change in how it operates its financial system. It asked the citizens to participate in providing a separate set of eyes through an audit committee. This has been an operation, I think, approximately four years. We started our own department. Deborah Jenkins is the director of the department. Number you on the board have said on that committee. Its primary function, again, is to provide independent eyes from city government to make sure that we are running our financial operation appropriately. Their main function, or one of their main functions, is to review the annual audit. Today, we're honored to have David McKellup, who is the head of, the chairman of that committee. And I think David would like to say a few words, and I believe he's here.
Thanks, Kevin. Good evening. The Audit Committee met with our auditors, Mount Joy, Chilton and Medley, on December twelfth to review and discuss the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, or CAFR. Representatives from Mount Joy included the engagement partner and the engagement manager. We spent about an hour and a half or so going over the CAFR in detail. Mount Joy gave us ample time for questions and discussion of several detailed points in that. A couple of highlights I'd just like to go over relatively briefly. During the fiscal year ended June thirtieth, the city's total net assets increased ten point nine million dollars. That was on top of an increase of about eight point seven million in the prior year. So that's two years of very nice total net asset increases. At year-end, there were seventeen million dollars, or seventeen million in unrestricted resources available for the ongoing projects of the city and the current and the future projects. So that's a very favorable number as well. Compared to the prior fiscal year, revenues for this fiscal year increased to one point two million, primarily due to improvement in the local economy and the taxes increasing from wages and net profit taxes. And the total expenses during the year decreased about one point two million. That was primarily from interest expense reduction from reducing the long-term debt of the city. During the year, the total debt, including government and business-type debt, decreased by about six point eight million. So I think I speak for the Audit Committee and really for, you know, as a citizen, when I say that, you know, we continue to be impressed with the conservative and proactive approach that Mr. DeFebo and Mr. Mizel have been taking with respect to the city's finances. For the past several years, you know, the city's leadership has achieved some significant cost savings while maintaining the relatively high level of services to the citizens of Bowling Green. And I think in this day and age, that is really to be commended. Mount Joy, once again, was very complimentary of Mr. Mizel on the finance team, and they appreciated the support and cooperation that they got from the city. Their audit opinion was clean and unqualified, which is the best you can get. There were no internal control weaknesses noted at all during this audit. And therefore, you know, based on this favorable report, the Audit Committee recommends approval of the CAFR. In keeping with the tradition that Gene Cherry started last year, I'd like to say that if you have any questions, Jeff Mizel would be happy to answer those at this time.
So any discussion? Any questions? Mr. McKellup, you handled every question that I was going to bring.
Only if I can phone a friend if I need to.
I appreciate you bringing out the increase in assets, the reduction of debt. And I know Mr. Mizel, Mr. DeFebo know they have our support in maintaining a conservative fiscal approach to city government. And I know you and the other gentlemen on the Audit Committee put a lot of work and time into probably the most...
work and time into probably the most, what most people think are very mundane issues, looking at numbers over and over again. Those of us who like accounting, we kind of get excited at that. So I appreciate your, your service there, and thank you for the good report, Mr. Febo.
I know that Jeff and I got a nice kudo for those remarks. Thank you very much. But I think it speaks to all of our employees...
Yes.
... who have done more with less over the last couple of years. It hasn't been easy. We want to thank them especially, because they made it happen, as well as the senior management team. Kate had a large part in making that happen, and the whole budget team and the employees. So it's nice to hear that, that those opinions. Thank you.
And make sure I understand this, we're still operating about on the same revenue that we received in 2007, and for the most part, I don't think the general public has noticed a reduction in services, even though it's several million dollars less in income that we've had. Good job. Thank you very much.
I just want to thank Deborah for a great job. I know when I met with her, when I was first appointed, I was just, all the new programs she has implemented to make sure our city's running the way it needs to, so thank you.
Oh, and I'm sorry, I forgot to mention the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting that we received for our 2010 fiscal year. Go ahead.
One other comment, Mayor, is that we have recently published, I think you have it in your hands...
Yes, I'm sorry, thanks.
Something called a Popular Annual Financial Report. So we, we now have a CAFR, and I guess you could call that a PAFR. We have distributed those over the last several days. And what it is, it's just a condensed version of our CAFR. It's a little easier to read, it's got some pictures, some, some good demographics or graphics and things like that in it. But we've kind of circulated those out in the public, just for the citizens out there that they can read at their leisure. We've also posted that on our website along with our, our CAFR, so...
Yeah, it's a very good summary of, of the financial activities, and even, even though we, our revenue is the same since 2007, I believe, Mr. Febo's photograph is from 2007 as well.
Yeah, that's before gray hair.
That's all we have. Thank you.
All right, anything else? We need to call the roll to accept this financial report.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. McKellup, appreciate it. Municipal order 2011-239.
Municipal order approving agreement between the City of Bowling Green and St. Joseph Foundation Incorporated related to the provision of cemetery services.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Dunning, second by Hill. Any discussion, or Mr. Febo?
Yeah, last, I think last work session, we talked about the various, it was a misnomer, subsidies that the various recreation department receives. One of the things that was identified was the cemetery, in which we do not collect enough revenues to provide the services. We're always mindful of our need to be entrepreneurial and try to, try to make money where we can. We've been approached by the St. Joseph Foundation to use some of our labor to, I believe, open graves and closed graves for those deceased and provide other cemetery-type services. We took upon an opportunity to recommend to you that we do that. Ernie's here, if you have any general questions about how cemeteries work, but we thought it was a good opportunity for St. Joe as, as well as City of Bowling Green.
Any discussion?
Who did they have to do that type of work for them before, you know? Knocked it this big deal.
I don't know, Mr. Dunning. I know it was a bid process, we submitted a bid for it and received it. But besides, I'd like to add one other thing, you know, it was good they'd be a purple, but it's good to be a Mustang, too, Mr. Dunning.
Appreciate that, buddy. We go back a long way.
All right, any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal order 2011-240.
Municipal order dedicating and naming Lee Square Park Picnic Shelter, the Aura Porter Park picnic area.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Dunning, second by Hill.
With your courtesy, I'd like to defer to the mayor, who has been involved with this more intimately than I, and I think Bruce has some insight into this better than me.
The issue was brought up and brought to our attention by Colonel Mrs. Cordine Spiller back in August. Ms. Spiller is the chairperson for the Warren County Kentucky State Highway Markers. Those are the bronze plaques that you see mounted in various parts of, of the community, commemorating either a historic place or an important site. This was one that was already in place in the 700 block of College Street, but was removed as part of the TIF program to redevelop that area, and Ms. Porter's home was removed to make way for some new development. As part of the idea to remember Ms. Porter, Ms. Spiller approached the Carver Center Committee, Commission?
Yes, Board, Bulwark Board.
And requested their permission to be involved with bringing that plaque back, and the plaque is back at the small park in Lee Square. It's already, the square, the park itself is already named Lee Square, so we wouldn't be renaming it. That's a historical name for that, but the bronze plaque is there, and this is an opportunity to commemorate Ms. Ms. Porter by naming that area as Aura Porter Picnic Area. And we appreciate them bringing that to our attention and are glad to remember part of our history, especially the African-American history in that area.
Mayor, I think that she was the first black registered nurse, could have been a licensed practical nurse, I can't remember, but she was the first of one of those. I'm thinking it was a registered nurse.
I believe that's correct. I think that's on, on the plaque, but I failed to go by there and write down some notes before I came this evening.
Well, Doug Gorman knocked it down.
Mr. Gorman's here to thank you, sir. Is there any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
We'll be going into closed session. I'm sorry, we have one extra item. We got the extra, we added to the agenda. We got it there, thank you. Municipal order 2011-241.
Municipal order approving a letter agreement between the City of Bowling Green and the Kentucky State Historic Preservation Office related to a historic mitigation project.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Waltrip, second by Hill. Mr. Febo?
As we all know, the SkyPac is scheduled to open in March. It'll be an exciting time for the community. We've been working to help make that project, along with our partners at the county, to do our part. Part of our, our responsibility, along with the county, is to work on satisfying the requirements of State Historical and Preservation Office for the demolitions of 631 and 633 College Street. This is a fairly long process, that, that it has lapsed over a number of years. We're at the final point in which they agreed that we could tear those down if the mayor tonight will sign a document that essentially says that we've done everything we need to do, and all we have to do is, I believe, put up three small signs memorializing some of the historical aspects of that, those, that area, similar to what the county has done with the, the Greenway Project. So we hold hardly recommend that, you know, you approve this, and then tomorrow, we can tell Judge Buchanan and others that they are free to remove those buildings.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
We'll be going into closed session. Will there be any decisions?
No vote, but I do have a dilemma. I have Mark and Doug, who I both promised to go first, so I need to ask who will be the quickest. Mark?
I don't know what Doug has.
They got test stuff.